Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Monday, December the 6th, Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call forward Ms. Cherry Wheeler to give us an invitation.
Let us pray together. As we come into this season of celebration, whether we celebrate the Festival of Lights, the Babe in a Manger, renew the Seven Principles of Kwanzaa, or just enjoy the Spirit of Giving, it is a time to renew our faith and practice our beliefs. This time of year for many is a time of family reunions, remembering the celebrations of years past and beginning new traditions with the next generations. Yet for some, it is the most difficult time of the year, a time when grief is overwhelming, when the family gatherings only bring more pain, when hope, joy, peace, and love seem an unreachable dream. May we be the light in the darkness. May we bring that hope, joy, peace, and love to those we encounter through the simple acts of holding the door for another, allowing someone to go ahead of us in line, and by supporting those organizations trying to make a difference in others' lives, like the Food Pantry, the Many Angel Trees, Toys for Tots, Salvation Army, and so many other organizations standing in the gap. Guide us to be more loving to those we encounter, quick to forgive those who have wronged us, becoming instruments of peace rather than strife, and providing hope for the hopeless. In these ways, may we be all that we believe about this season. May the prayer for peace on earth be realized. This we pray. Amen.
Amen. May we stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Before we get started this morning, there's a couple of introductions I would like to make that we're privileged to have with us here this morning. Murray Allen Valance, who is the Chair of the Board of Education. We've got Susan Bothwell, who's a BOE member. We have David Twitty, BOE member, and Mr. Joe Tarver, who's a Board of Education member. We're also fortunate to have with us this morning Superintendent Farley. Superintendent was gracious enough to help me with these fine-looking young folks in front of us this morning, to have them share a little bit of Christmas with us this morning. So at this time, I'd like to ask Keith Parker, who is the Director of Secondary Education, to make some introductions. And while he's doing that, I'm going to ask the Board if they would like to go down front so they could enjoy this music by our students as we would. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're very thankful for the invitation to come and join you at the meeting this morning. And we do have with us here the Manio High School Band and Chorus under the direction of Director Ms. Emma Alter. And they've prepared some Christmas selections for you this morning, and they've been working hard in culmination of their upcoming Christmas concert. So we're just thankful to share this with you and again, appreciative of the invitation. So thank you guys for being here this morning. And Ms. Alter, thank you for preparing. And we'll let you guys take it away for us.
Thank you so much for letting us play.
All right, and then, front row, Fiona. Thank you.
Follow it behind her.
Yep. And then, next row, y'all just kind of stick up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What'd you say?
(Inaudible).
Had so many folks up here earlier when I was making some introductions, I overlooked Assistant Superintendent Schools Sandy Kensel. She's here with us this morning as well. And it's always great to have the kids do this at our December meeting, and we really appreciate the school doing this. And Emma, thank you so much. It was really enjoyable. Give us just a couple more minutes. I'll ask the clerk to the board. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerk to the board.
Hello. Good morning.
Morning.
I hope everyone enjoyed that music as much as I did. It was wonderful. It was a great way to bring in the Christmas and the holiday season to Dare County and to our board this morning. And like we do for each first meeting, for December is the time that we elect our chairman that'll serve on the board for the next fiscal year. And so this year, we'll do the same in accordance with Robert's rules. There is no second required. We do need four votes for whoever is elected. And so at this time, I'd ask you all, I'd ask you to give me some nominations for chairman for the board for Dare County Board of Commissioners.
Nominate Bob Woodard.
Vice Chair Wally Overman has nominated Chairman Woodard. Is there any other nominations at this time?
I move nominations be closed.
Nominations have now been closed. If you, men will gently raise your hands in favor of the nomination for Robert Woodard to serve as your chairman again this year. Please let me know that. And of course, we have unanimous. And so Chairman Woodard, congratulations as you serve our county and serve the people of Dare County for another fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, clerk. Thank you all very much, and thank you, board. I cannot thank you enough for your approval and your support, and certainly your confidence in my chairmanship, and please know how much it's greatly appreciated. At this time, I'll open the floor for election of Vice Chairman. Once again, same as Chair. We do this annually. There's no second required. And I will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair at this time.
I'll nominate Wally Overman for Vice Chair.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to nominate the Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations?
I move nominations be closed.
Okay. There's a motion by Commissioner House that the nominations be closed. Those in favor of Vice Chairman Overman to serve as Vice Chair once again in the coming year, will you raise your right hand? Once again, that's unanimous, and so congratulations, Vice Chairman Overman. Thank you. Okay, County Manager, that brings us to Item Three.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item Three on the agenda is the Chairman's opening remarks.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll be brief this morning, just have a couple of things. I don't know if, it looks like Mr. Tarver has not left. He was here representing the Board of Ed with our kids this morning. Just want to reach out. Matt, do you have something for me, please? Mr. Tarver was inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame for the Maryland Chapter this year's outstanding, as this year's outstanding America. Joe has certainly wrestled in his early career as a young man. He referees all over the country, and this is quite an honor for him. He's certainly a veteran of the armed services and served in Afghanistan, and couldn't be more proud to have you here, Joe, this morning, and recognize you with your accomplishments and congratulations on being named to the Hall of Fame in Maryland.
You bet. Well done, Joe.
Next on my list, once again, Matt, I need your help. Remembering Mr. Eddie Green. He passed away this past week at age 96. He'd been one of the founding members of the Outer Banks Community Foundation and a longtime proprietor of the Christmas shop here in Manio. Believe he came here in '57, I believe was the date. But he certainly was a member of the cast of Lost Colony, a well-respected gentleman in Manio, and has given back to our community multiple times in many, many fashions. So our heart goes out to the Green family if you'll keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And then last but not least, we just found out this week that Mike Kelly will have the 2022 St. Patrick's Day Parade. I know everybody's looking forward to that. That's a big event in Dare County, and I couldn't be more happy to hear that Mike has announced that he will continue that tradition. And so we will have the St. Patty's Day Parade in 2022. So look forward to that, and I'm sure it'll be big and big, and as big as any year that he's ever had this. And I know that the community's looking forward to this. So with that, Mr. County Manager, that completes my Chairman's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to Item Four on the agenda, and that's the presentation of our service pins. This morning, we have Claudia Neal, who's a Senior Foreign Language Interpreter with the Department of Social Services, is here to receive her tenure pin from Tammy Weaver.
Good morning, ladies, and welcome.
Good morning. It's my pleasure today to present Claudia with her tenure service pin and to tell you a little bit about her. Claudia was born in Colombia, South America. She moved to the United States 14 years ago. She is married to Jay and has two sons, Nika, who's five, and Sebastian, who's three. Claudia is, she has a beautiful singing voice and a beautiful soul. Claudia is truly one of the most caring people I know. As you know, she works as the interpreter for the Dare County Department of Social Services. She is respected and trusted by both her coworkers and the clients that she interprets for. In her position, she interprets, of course, for the entire agency. So one minute, she can be interpreting a food stamp application, and the next minute, she can be called out into the field with the social worker to deal with a child welfare case. Claudia is always willing to take on whatever task is asked of her. During COVID, she became a little bit of a super TV star, I guess you could say. She did the videos for the Hispanic community to let them know about COVID and what was going on. As a matter of fact, Skip had this to say about her. "I'd be remiss if I did not share some high praise for Claudia. She is a rock star this evening, staying and working late to help me out, not only to properly edit the video, but to translate the graphics and ensure the video's quality. She was super patient in helping me to understand the translation and to ensure that every sentence and phrase had the proper meaning. And above all, she was ideal and friendly despite having already worked a full day. Like I said, she's a rock star. In her spare time, personally, I don't know how she has any spare time with two small children and a husband that is stationed in Ocracoke, she is always advocating for the Latino community. She has served as the President of the Mono El Hermano and is currently part of the Latino Resource Coalition, a board member on the Roanoke Island Aquarium Society, and has recently been invited to become a board member of the Outer Banks Community Foundation."
Wow.
"In all that she does, Claudia is always professional. She's an excellent representative of the county. She is continually advocating. It has been a privilege to work with you for the past 10 years. I hope that you stay forever. Thank you." Thank you.
Congratulations.
I wasn't prepared to say anything, but I'm very grateful because you're very generous. The comments are, well, I almost cried. But I'm very happy to be part of this whole group, and I'm saying group as a Dare County employee. It's an honor, it's a privilege, and I'm very happy to be here with you. And I'm also very, very happy to be able to be part of the DSS team because many of the people here in the county doesn't realize how good they had it. And we, Social Services, we have, firsthand, like, we know the struggles in the many things that we do as an agency, of course, with your support, have changed lives. And you probably don't hear those stories, but it's amazing, and I'm very happy to be part of that change and the support that the community has through DSS. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Item Five on the agenda is Employee of the Month, and Chuck Lycett would come forward to make that presentation.
Good morning, Chuck. And good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Cameron.
Surprise.
Come up, please.
I've learned not to tap people on the shoulder. It seems to freak them out.
(Laughter) Say what? Just waiting. In August 2020, Cameron joined Dare County as the Health and Human Services Information Systems Administrator. He left the entrepreneurial world looking for more regular hours. Yes, he is still adapting to paid time off and holiday leave. Cameron brought with him a wealth of knowledge about computer hardware, software, and systems. Within the first week, he was off and running. He provides support to almost 200 individuals, and that was not a challenge for him. He quickly acclimated himself to the many programs and started troubleshooting issues with staff to minimize workflow disruptions. When he had a question about something he could not resolve, he searched for a contact and called or emailed the person. Today, we are more reliant on computer systems for client information and files. He understands the importance of keeping these systems functioning and staff operating. He quickly developed a working relationship with Matt Hester and the county IT staff. Cameron has what seems to be a never-ending list of ideas on how to improve our current processes and workflows and move the remaining paper functions to automation. He presents solutions and estimated costs with alternatives. When Cameron joined us, the department was in the midst of the building construction project. We quickly learned of his construction skills and his prior experiences with commercial construction projects and office moves. He redesigned the IT rooms and worked closely with the company installing the new wiring. He was assigned to work with the moving company moving furniture each week. To create efficiency, he provided them with drawings of what was needed to be moved into where. He moved the staff's computer equipment at least twice, sometimes as many as six times. When desks were not available, he created temporary workstations. You may ask yourself, what makes the work that Cameron does different? It's how he does it. He's organized. He's methodical. He has the ability to adjust as needed. He brought with him an incredible set of soft skills. His customer service skills are some of the best that I've ever seen. Ensuring computers are functional each day is his priority. He has a pleasant personality. He treats everyone the same, no matter if you're a supervisor or a line staff. I believe at some time, we've all struggled with our computer only to find out there was a simple solution, like turning on the computer or plugging it into the wall. Cameron listens to staff computer problems and patiently walks them through the steps needed to resolve the problem without making you feel inadequate or stupid. He accepts challenges and never complains. He always has a smile on his face, even when he's sweating after moving furniture or computers. He maintains a calm demeanor in the midst of chaos. He has a great sense of humor. We are happy to have Cameron as a member of the DHHS team and are thankful for the contributions he's made in his short time. It is with pride that I present you with Dare County's December Employee of the Month, Cameron Thompson. (Applause) More hugs. That's public comment. For those of you that just received it.
For those of you that just received an award, if you'd please go right out the door here with Dorothy so she can get some more pictures, please. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time to spend some time for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light on the podium that will come on when your time begins. There's a y'all light that will come on when you have about a minute left, and there's a red light that comes on when your time is up. I don't think I have any signups. Does anyone here like to speak at public comment this morning? Anyone here? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Duke.
Good morning. Duke Garrity, Government Affairs, Outer Banks Home Builders Association. Item made on your agenda today is the report or an update on the Bowser Towne Project, and I want to congratulate you. Thank you for not just letting it hang. It looks like we're finally going to see some results. Looking forward to that. I was at your special meeting about two or three weeks ago when we had, there was a lot of discussion on the size of the units, whether you're going to do one-bedroom or two-bedroom units. Talking to our board and our membership a little bit and talking to people in the community, I'm hoping that the report comes back that we need more two-bedroom units. One-bedroom unit will fill a temporary need, but they are very temporary housing. When people come in, nobody with a family stays in one-bedroom units, and you'll have a quick turn over of that. Two-bedroom units could be a single mother with one or two kids, it could be a couple with a child, and it becomes a home. When you have a one-bedroom unit, it's a studio, it's a hotel room. You always have to have a sofa bed in the living room. So I'm hoping that we consider keeping the numbers up there and trying to come up with more two-bedroom than one-bedroom. I'll be interested to see what the DFI comes back with. Again, I want to congratulate you, and I also publicly want to thank Representative Hannigan, Senator Steinberg, for the large grant that Dare County was able to get. I hope this is the beginning of more projects. I'm looking forward to it. And also, there is a project, and I don't know if it's an Affordable House, President Kitty Hawk, and they made an application to change their plan. It's a part up by the new 7-Eleven, and he's come to the conclusion that he wants to put more two-bedroom homes in there too. We'll have the same number of bedrooms, but he's going to reduce the number of one-bedrooms to put more two-bedroom units, which will be a little less lock coverage and a much better need for what's in Dare County. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Duke.
Bobby, behind you.
Sure.
Welcome, Mary Ellen.
I'm Mary Ellen Balance. I'm chairman of the Board of Education, and I just, real quick, wanted to thank you all for your support of the board and the support of the superintendent. We appreciate all that you do for us and for our schools, and the communication that we have with you guys is, you know, second to none. So just wanted to thank you and look forward to another year.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary Ellen.
Anyone else for public comment? Anybody else? Anyone in Buxton for public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
Chairman, that would close the public comment, and that moves us on to item number seven in the Dare County Motorsports Charity Groups here, and Terry Gray.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning and welcome, Terry.
Good morning. Gentlemen, you'll find something at your seat that we dropped off this morning. Hope you enjoy it. We worked off of the list from last year, so if any of y'all ate too much and they don't fit, let me know. Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to be here this morning to give you a little update on the toy run. This is the sixth year that we've had the Dare County Motorcycle Jeep Toy Run, and we were really excited this year. We've had a phenomenal year, even with the bad situation that we faced with the pandemic. We've been very successful. We had 107 motorcycles that rode in our toy run, and we had 195 Jeeps. It was a very, very big procession. There's been a little bit of talk of making it two separate events for the toy run. That'll be discussed, and we'll kind of figure out if we need to have the Jeeps in one event and the motorcycles in another because it was very, very long. And again, the Sheriff's Department did an excellent job. We had no incidents, and they just, they made you guys look good. This is the sixth year that they've made you all look real good. So be proud of the Sheriff's Department. I do have a plaque to present to a representative. I think we have a representative here from the Sheriff's Department. See if I can get this open. Yeah, there we go. We'd like to thank you very much for your support during the toy run and thank you all for helping us each and every year. We couldn't do it without you. Commissioners, we thank you all for letting them do this.
Thank you very much.
Appreciation of Sheriff Doughty and the Dare County Sheriff's Office. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I think I got all the notes off of that. Yeah, no, I'm good. This year, the toy run itself actually raised $10,500 for the event that day. We are very fortunate to be able to have a lot of people that helped us do that. We had the Cat Five Jeep Club, which is a part of our organization, and various other individuals that helped with that. So we're very thankful for that. Now we'll get to the main point. We made a contribution to the Dare Center, and I'd like to call up Ms. Sandy at this time, I think. There she comes. This was a donation that we made to the Dare Center for Christmas for the kids. This year, we were able to give, this is a little bit bigger check, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
We were able to give $25,000 to the Dare Center. This town is all about Dare Center. We do Paddles Island and the northern beaches and the mainland, and this gal does a fantastic job of providing Christmas and gifts to the children, and hopefully this will help her do that. Sandy, we thank you so much. Hopefully you can buy a lot of toys. Okay. Yeah, yeah, get everybody in front of me. Makes me look smaller. Not working? Not working? Okay.
Thank you.
But I tell you what, folks, these guys do all the work. We're just, yeah, we're happy to be a part of it. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for participating in the toy run, and Commissioner House, thank you for being there. Each one of y'all support us very much. Commissioner Bateman, we appreciate that, and we couldn't do it without you. We're going to be having an event in April, and if y'all will still stay tuned to us, we'll have some information coming out on that, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you, sir.
Terry, thank you, and we appreciate all that you do and the amount of money that's raised. It's a really phenomenal $25,000 donation is pretty incredible, and once again, thank you for all you do. I've participated, enjoy riding my Harley in that toy run, and just wouldn't miss it for anything, and I know Commissioner House, but he's with the Jeep folks, and they follow up behind us, and it's always a fun time running down NC 12 and over to Mans Harbor. It's just a great, great event, and thank you again for what you do.
Mr. Chairman, we, since the beginning toy run that we did, we've had a 500% increase in the money collected over the six-year period.
Yeah, only suggestion I'd have is slow it down a little bit. Believe it or not, people on NC 12, they're out on the sidewalks, they're on the porches, they're waving, they're having a blast. We kind of flew by them this year a lot, and it's kind of hard to wave at those folks when you're concentrating, riding your motorcycle down the beach, but just a recommendation, slow it down a little bit. We were going pretty good speed now on NC 12.
We'll help you with that. We'll let you lead it next time.
Well, if you do, if you do, probably be 20 miles an hour.
The lead bike, how about that? Thank you, gentlemen.
Terry, I heard he rides with his eyes closed.
Probably. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
The money raised, thank you, Terry, and all that participated goes to the Dare Center and the toy drive, and I believe Ms. Pace just may have departed, but I sit on their board, and I can tell you she is a one-woman force of nature. The three-night celebration where they break down the kids by age group and distribute the gifts and toys, it is something to behold, so very good stuff. Thank you.
Pretty awesome. Thank you, Commissioner. County Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to item eight on the agenda. Amy Bassnight is here to bring us an update for Adoration Hospice. The clerks tell me she was not able to attend, so.
Oh, okay.
And so that moves us on to item nine. This is our Essential Housing Needs Project.
Excuse, Mr., excuse me. So we're, we just dropped that?
No, no, I'll get back, I'll get back with it. I'll get back with it.
I didn't know she wasn't going to be here. Item nine on the agenda is our Essential Housing Needs Project update, and we'll have Sarah Odeo and Marcia Parrott. There's Sarah.
... by our Deputy Director, Marcia Parrott. Let me see. Can you see the next slide on this?
Hey, Sarah.
Yes.
We just got you up good. Could you start again at the beginning, please?
Yes, I can. I want to check what screen you can see.
Right now, we have the program recommendations, the blue slide with the agenda to the right.
Yeah, got it. All right, that should be the whole screen. Okay, so I'll start again. Okay, hi, I'm Sarah Odeo. I'm a senior project manager with the Development Finance Initiative. I'm joined here today by Marcia Parrott, who is our deputy director. I started by saying thank you all for accommodating me doing this online today. So today's presentation is pretty straightforward. You all have seen this already, so there is no really new information, but the plan is to go over the project to date. We'll talk about some development context, just to understand sort of what the challenges and opportunities are with development here, and then dig into Bowser Town Road, what are the options and considerations for you all here, and then next steps. So you're all familiar with us, but for anyone in the room that's not, I'm with the Development Finance Initiative. We are a program of UNC Chapel Hill School of Government, and our work is dedicated to advising local governments on real estate development and finance. My expertise personally is on affordable housing. There is a team behind every project, so you'll only really ever see me or Marcia, but really there are a slew of people doing a lot of work in the background, as you can see here on this slide. So the goal of our work, and always is, is about putting together a feasible development plan. So feasibility is, will the market support this project? Does the site fit the number and type of units that you want to see? If you're using a special financing source, does something have to change about the plan to make it work? And then the financials, right? That's always the big piece. So what are all of the privately available funding sources, publicly available funding sources that can make this deal happen? And is county investment needed to make it work? And of course, public interests are the base of all of this, and this is why DFI exists, which is ensuring that while any private developer is going to look at the market, the site, and the financial, are we factoring the public interests into feasibility? And so all of the scenarios I show you are feasible development plans. That is not to say that a developer can't come back with another plan that's slightly different and that is also feasible, but this is making sure that we are providing you with the best option and minimizing public investment. So it's been, and it has felt like a long timeline, but this project kicked off, I'll say, just in time for COVID. The pandemic hit, and it's hard to put yourself back in that space. I know that I struggle sometimes, but there was so much uncertainty at that time. The county then also had an opportunity to proceed on Bowser Towne at one point and decided to pause the work in order to pursue that. But we're back, we've got some plans for you all. You brought us back on, and what I want to bring your attention to, most importantly, is that the next phase of this work is actually to go out and identify a development partner. Okay, so today, you're making a decision about how you want to proceed, and then we can go out and find the right partner for the county. Now, I talk about the public interest being critical, right, to a feasible development plan, and in this case, you all agreed on three public interests. Affordability related to maximizing the units available and affordable to low and moderate income houses, right? The key here is that it's both low and moderate income, and I'll define that a little bit more later. You all wanted to ensure that whatever you do has long-term affordability of the units that are set aside, and of course, always efficiently using public investment to attract private investment. The matter of length is something that we can deal with, with the agreements that are put in place, the deed restrictions on the land, it could be a ground lease, and that is something that we can iron out. But the two big questions at the forefront is, okay, how do we maximize the number of units? How many units do we want at each income level? And ultimately, how much do we want to invest? And can we invest in this project? A reminder to you all about what we're talking about when I say low income and moderate income. So low, if you hear the middle, is its definition, household's earning about 60% of the area median income, and that would be a two-person household earning about, I'm going to round it up, $35,000 a year. So that household, in theory, could afford rent of about $800 for, as a two.
Sarah, Sarah, real quick, does that, hello?
Yes.
Does that 813 include or exclude monthly utilities?
It includes utilities. Thank you for that question. I appreciate that. That is housing costs, so it should say monthly housing costs. I apologize for that. And then in terms of moderate income, that is a household going up to about $46,000 a year and including utilities, about $1,000, nearly $1,100 a month. And so we showed you this before, this hasn't been updated, but just the units demanded exceeding the affordable available unit. So you need, as a county, units at every income bracket. That's not a surprise, and we see this everywhere. Your need is quite great at that low to moderate income level as you all have targeted. Now, I just added this in based on the public comment, but you've seen this all before, but I just popped it back in, which is that the majority of your renters in the county are one- and two-person households. That's not to say that a one-person household wouldn't want a two-bedroom. Nobody is saying that. So two-bedrooms are very much also still needed, but I want to flag that most of your renters and your low-income renters are smaller households in Dare County, and therefore, that's why we ended up seeing a lot of one- and two-bedroom mix. So digging into the development context, context that's going to affect what you see here today and ultimately really flags a lot of that uncertainty that here today, and ultimately, uh, really flags a lot of that uncertainty that we're still in. Um, the construction costs continue to rise. So last time, uh, not last time, but the last time you saw me in terms of when we restarted this project, we were talking, we talked a lot about construction costs at that time, and we were talking about lumber. Um, and lumber ultimately went down, but a lot of other things went up, right? So the costs of materials are really fluctuating, and there is so much uncertainty still at this time, still at this time. Um, and we're seeing with the supply chain, a lot of buildup. And so I just want to flag this, that the numbers that you're going to see and that you've seen, um, these are our best guesses, right, based on educated guess with conversations with people in the field doing the work. But even they don't know for sure where this is going to go. So our numbers are estimates. They represent a range at all times. Um, there are a lot of local opportunities and challenges, and they remain the same, right? Nothing has changed of what the challenges are in the county, um, and also with the opportunity. Regardless, if you are targeting low and moderate income households in Dare County where costs are high, um, county participation is always going to be essential. Now, one of the things that I'll repeat throughout this is that in order for the county to participate, to subsidize the units in a overall development, about 20% of the units must be affordable to and for the exclusive use of low-income households. So I'll remind you, that was a total housing costs of about $800 a month, 60% AMI. Um, there are many ways that you can do this. And so when I show you a public participation number, there are little different ways that you can kind of make that work, but ultimately, a direct, um, loan or grant tied to the assistance of low-income households, uh, will be critical to making anything work. Now, I'm going to flag that the town of Manio, uh, their participation is required in order for something to happen on Bowser Town Road, um, in order to connect the development to the sewer treatment system. And so this is critical to actually moving forward with a project on Bowser Town Road. Now, I have shown this many times. I won't get into the details of the low-income housing tax credit program, um, but why, why it's something that is most often used in the development of affordable housing for low-income households is that it is a huge subsidy, it brings in a lot of equity to the deal, and it provides infrastructure from monitoring, right? There is an entity that makes sure that whatever you do remains. Now, uh, there are various things here. You can take a look at it, but something that the program can do is go up to units that are affordable at 80% AMI, something called income averaging, as long as the units are affordable at 60% AMI. But there have been changes in the IRS regulations that have made this, that investors are just not interested in touching those projects. So over time, what we're seeing is that 80% AMI units are no longer getting included in new projects in North Carolina.
What?
So the LITC program is for 60% AMI.
What is that? Sarah, go over that one more time.
They're not doing the 80% units.
Yes, I'm flagging this because if you're familiar with it, so income averaging is that you can have units affordable up to 80% AMI, as long as all of the units average to 60% AMI.
But when you said.
So that would include units at 40, 30, up to 80. But although it still exists, this option to do this, investors are not touching it because the IRS has changed the regulations and made it that it is very difficult to keep the units in compliance. So investors are not interested in this. Yeah.
Just to be clear, Sarah, they're, they're not doing the 80% when it's connected to LIHTC. If you have no LIHTC in it, then that problem doesn't exist, right? The 80% problem.
Right. I'm just talking about the use of LIHTC here, which is the equity, tax credit equity that has, it's a, brings in a huge subsidy to make the development happen. So without LIHTC, there is a huge gap, right? You're not filling that gap.
So just.
Without LIHTC, we can do anything we want.
Well, we'll, we'll see.
If, if you do LIHTC, then to do the income averaging, to get the 80%, the, the investor shy away. If you do not do LIHTC, which is what she's going to show you in a minute, then we don't have the problem with having to meet the LIHTC requirement, but we still have to meet the 80% AMI, and that's not a problem development-wise.
Got it. So to meet the 4% LIHTC requirements, all units must be 60% AMI?
You, you have to.
Or below.
Or below, or you, and you can use income averaging by, for up to 80% units, as long as the income averaged amount.
Is 60% or less?
Right.
Which puts it in the, what does that do for a family of two, Sarah? Puts it at about $35,000?
Uh, yes, I believe so. At 60%. Yeah, 36.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Sarah.
Okay. I was just, I, the point of all of that, not to get lost in that, uh, the point is that if you're doing 80% AMI, LIHTC isn't really a good option any longer due to changes in regulation. Okay? Um, so the county can facilitate mixed income development with limitations, okay? So I've said this before, I will kind of keep repeating it. Your ability to participate in a development directly is limited in two ways, okay? The total county payment to the developer cannot be more than the difference between the market rent and the affordable rent. And at least 20% of the units in the development have to be for persons earning less than 60% AMI, okay? Now, even though 20% have to be at 60%, there's no exception on that, you have authority to actually subsidize units up to 80% AMI. So that is your $900 rent that we've talked about a lot in the past. So you can subsidize up to that point, but not beyond that point, okay? And that 60% is non-negotiable.
And there's no LIHTC money in this model, correct?
There is no LIHTC model.
Thank you.
In this. Okay. Um, so the county's authority, so, um, I just want to give you a visual of kind of where subsidy exists, all right? So we've got a lot of subsidy at that low-income 60% AMI level. Once you go past that, it sort of dwindles down to just sort of local government investment and federal loans, federally guaranteed loans. Above 80% AMI, there's just a gap. There's always going to be a feasibility gap and no subsidy. And beyond that, with market rate, when they're unrestricted, they pay, you know, operating income covers operating expenses. So just to visually see that there is always kind of a, the more expensive your market is, as we know Dare is very expensive to rent, the bigger gap there's going to be in what can be provided, either subsidized or by the market delivering it naturally. Um, I, I just want to emphasize, we've said this, but mixed income development that prioritizes rents at 80% AMI, or 70 to 80, which is really where we're floating, is untested and is largely untested, and it's challenging in North Carolina, okay? Um, what we've looked at for this is using federally guaranteed loans through HUD or USDA, um, and these provide favorable loan terms. Uh, you can get a 40-year amortization. It does add time to the process. It requires experience from the developer in this space, but those rates and terms are competitive. So we have modeled the use of one of these loans. It is important to note that if the development occurs without LIHTC, Dare County or a dedicated partner will be responsible for actually monitoring the project, right? What needs to happen is that the developer and their management company, they have to verify the income of residents coming in. And then someone at the county level will have to ensure that those units remain affordable over a period of time, or the period of time that's established. And there's also an element of making sure that the quality remains intact for the project over time. Now, the pool of developers with expertise, mixed income, the kind that prioritizes 70, 80% AMI, and has 60%, but also unrestricted units, um, it's a lot more limited for, in terms of developers, because as I said, this isn't something that's done often in North Carolina. And the reason is because of the amount of subsidy that is required to make it happen, and because of the complexity of the management portion down the line. Because you're going to have two applicants. One is just applying for market rate, no restrictions, they run at any level, and then you have another applicant who you have to check their income periodically. They have to be, um, set at that level, and so there is complexity there. And you also have financing. So your investors, typically you have investors that do market rate, or you have investors that do affordable. So when you're mixing income levels, you're mixing restricted and unrestricted, you are adding a lot of complexity to the deal, and therefore, fewer developers are interested, not to say no developers, but fewer. Right? Okay, moving on to Bowser Town Road and what that means. So I just want to make sure all that's on the table. Um, it's been a long road on Bowser Town, and we're hoping that this is, um, going to be the culmination of it. A lot of starts and stops in large part because of the complexity around the site. It's not an easy site. Um, any development on the site has to be, you all, you know, you're familiar with this in Dare in general, but at about four feet above sea level. Um, you're also building, I think, building above sea level is not the Dare County problem, right? Um, it's developing around a state boat ramp, so instead of having one, you know, nice chunk of land, you're dealing with, you know, a couple of smaller parcels. And so the building efficiency, what you can actually build in terms of gross square footage and what you're actually leasing, um, is a lot lower because you don't have a nice big space to be able to do this. Um, the wetlands are also in the mix, limiting the developable area and that efficiency. We're going to need multiple ingresses off of California Lane. Um, parking is limited, right? Um, we, one of the biggest issues with Bowser Town is being that it is in a flood zone, that it has to carry hazard insurance. Means is that it's adding a huge expense line on an annual basis to the development. So your expenses are higher on Bowser Town Road than they would be outside the flood plain. Um, and with the current zoning, it only allows about 58 units. Uh, we're going to, uh, in the future, it's going to be something that has to be ironed out by Dare County to change the zoning to ensure that whatever is done, um, actually meets. So we've shown you various options. I want to flag that with LIHTC, um, you get low-income units at about $4 million. Um, it is kind of the cheapest affordable unit. The problem is that it's not giving you those moderate income units that you all want to be able to provide. And so we also looked at a no LIHTC version, uh, with the same model as the 76 units, mixed income. And then we also looked at a model that was maxing out the number of units on the site. So this was all one bedrooms, um, and that would be about 7.3 million, or about 81 units. So in reviewing these, I got some great feedback from you all, um, and we had a good conversation at the workshop. And the direction I ultimately got was, okay, we would like to follow up with the following. So 91 bedroom units and 32 bedroom units, primarily targeting households between 70 and 80% AMI. Um, but looking at, and you all wanted to see, okay, what could we get for various investment, various amounts of investments? Apologize for that. Um, so what you see here is the updated plan from Tyce Keister. Um, so you all got updated numbers from me based on the plan that they were able to fill up for two-bedroom units. So, county participation without LIHTC as the number of units at 70 to 80% AMI increase. So always, if we've got 120 units, always 20% are going to have to be at 60% AMI. So in every scenario that we see here, we've got 24 units at 60% of the area median income. So that 730 rent for a one-bedroom here in this case. As we move up from $7 million investment to a $9 million investment, we go from having 48 moderate income units to 78 moderate income units. As you have more density, so as we saw with the 151 units, um, the cost per affordable unit, uh, the investment per affordable unit goes down. Investment is always, uh, density is always a perfect, right? Help. Um, and then to even it out, it's the market rate units. Um, so for a lower public investment, you get fewer low, moderate income units. For a higher investment, you get, um, more moderate income units. So, um, I want to remind you that these estimates are a range, right? These are always going to represent a range based on current cost conditions. We conduct a test fit, and so we want to ensure that this will be feasible. But at the end of the day, right, um, when they start digging into the ground, what are they going to find? We don't know that today, right? Um, and we don't know where costs will be in 18 months. So that's good. I'm going to pause here, um, and I'd like to hear where you all are at in terms of number of units affordable at each level, what you would like to hit, what that priority is, and county investment. Reminder that next step will be to go to a solicitation process where you are going to say to the development community, this is what we want. We know that this is feasible. We know that we can get 80 units at this income level if we participate in this forum for this amount of investment. And so you're going to put it out there as this is what we're prepared to do for our public interest. So I'll pause there.
Sarah, in this slide that you have up now, it's, I think, 120 units. And when we say a unit is, there was a speaker that spoke at public hearing before you came on, and he was encouraging us to do as many two-bedroom units as was possible. And so my question is, when we start talking about units, can we, if we change or think about the mix of one to two bedrooms, what does that do to those numbers?
So I think the important thing to note is that with two-bedroom units, uh, because of kind of how the affordability and income limits are set, you end up getting less rent per square foot. So as the units get bigger, the rents aren't actually rising as much for bigger households typically, because as the households get bigger, it's children, right? It just, um, and so the rent per square foot is lower. And so the gap is actually bigger as you get into the bigger room.
So if we pick any of those income, any of those, uh, subsidy numbers, if we say we're going to hold it at $8 million, then, and, but we're going to increase the number of two-bedroom units, then the overall number of units is going to have to go down to make that work. Is that right?
Well, yes, and it'll have to go down in terms of space on the property as well, right? You are limited, not just by the financials, but by the site itself.
I got it. Okay.
Sarah, where was that other chart you just showed us with the 90/30 split? It was kind of up on the screen for a moment, and then it went away.
Is it on the screen?
Yes.
Yeah, there it is. Thank you.
So just noting that the, on the, uh, conceptual plan that you see here, the green is one bedrooms and the orange is the two-bedroom unit. I should have a legend for that. I apologize.
Would there be a significant impact if we go higher two bedrooms on, uh, parking, uh, and other infrastructure of, of any consequence?
I mean, you'll just have fewer units, right? So it, it goes back to sort of, the public interest I heard was the maximization of units. So it goes back to sort of, the public interest I heard was the maximization of units. And so you'll just have fewer units on the site if you go from one, two-bedroom unit.
Right, right, yeah. That's, it's a dynamic balance, sort of in this multi-variable equation, Sarah, of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, 60%, 70%, 80% market. Yeah, I understand and appreciate the model is at least usable as we switch around and evaluate assumptions. We can kind of get a good feel quickly as we adjust these variables. Because again, we had a speaker this morning who's in the business, and spoke pretty convincingly, Duke, on the need for two bedrooms, which we discussed in our meeting as well. When we went through this the other day, the two-bedroom piece was pretty important, I thought.
I just want to reemphasize is that if the question is about demand, or what the demand is for size of unit, there is definitely demand for one-bedroom units for these income levels. There is also demand for two-bedroom units, but not exclusive demand for two-bedroom.
See, as I look at the blue section of that graph, the light blue, I'm guessing there's a lot of two-bedroom demand in that 33 in the $8 million column, Bobby, that you selected just for example purposes. Again, I keep trying to consider someone working for the county or the school system or something. And if they have a child, two children, or it's just a husband and wife with one, they would be outside the 70% to 80% limit and still looking very, very desperately for, you know, clean, safe, adequate housing. And I'm trying to keep them in mind as well as we deal with some of the percentages in the AMI category.
That's right.
I, I want to bring you all back to the public interests. And, you know, I think there's always this desire to accomplish everything in one project. And in looking at this site and what's possible here, you know, you have to think about this site alone and not, it's not going to solve all the problems in one project. So what is this development going to do? What is the next development going to do?
And it's also in the perspective of the handicaps, so to speak, the limitations that Bowser Town has, which we've covered. We're trying to do the most we can with what we have. We don't have a lot of options at this point.
And as we've covered in the workshop, this is just one project. We have several that we're looking at. This is just one project, so.
So what do we need to do from this point?
If you don't have any questions, she can move on and take you to the decision points. Okay, Sarah.
All right, so the big decision that I'm asking for today, if possible, would be lovely, is that you all select a development setting. So what is the minimum number of units that you want to have at that 70% to 80% AMI point? And what is the maximum that you are able to invest or willing to invest in this project? Now, you're going to put that out there, and our goal is to, we're setting the parameters. But our goal is to have developers come back, and you can have a wish list. So I've talked about this before, because we haven't gotten to this point yet. But, you know, you have your baseline. We want, and we are requiring this. Our criteria is that there be this many units at this point. And in order to make that happen, we will not invest more than this much. And we know that this works. You can also have a wish list underneath that. So you could say, if within the, what we've asked for, you're then able to provide more two-bedroom units than what DFI has shared, please do so and show us that you can do that and how. So that is our goal with the solicitation, is to really set that parameter and ensure that we're protecting your public investment so we are not providing more than what they will actually need. Because they'll figure out how to make numbers work, right? If you're going to give them more than what they need. But you can have a wish list, right? You can have a list of items that you'd love to see happen if they could do it within the eight months. So I want to flag that. So today, I think the decision point that you're making is, you can also specify one and two-bedroom minimums, if you'd like. How many units minimum, and then that maximum county participation.
But we can get into that, Sarah, with the developer, can't we?
I'm sorry?
We can get into that situation with the developer. We don't really have to make that decision today, correct?
I'm sorry, which, which decision?
About how many bedrooms and how many, well, units pretty much, but how many bedrooms and stuff like that? That's more of the developer part aspect of it than what this is, correct?
It can be, but I'll say if there's a minimum amount, right? Because what's going to happen is you're going to get a bunch of, or some responses. It's mixed income, so I'm not going to promise a bunch of responses. But you get responses. The best thing you can do for the developers who are responding is help mitigate their risk by being very clear today about what you want. So if not having any two-bedroom units is going to break this and not give that developer any chance, then we can't say, oh, you can do all one-bedroom units. Because it's not true, right? You won't vote for that. And so what I want you all to think about is, what is the minimum? Let's be very clear with developers about what you want at a minimum on this site. And what is the maximum that you're willing to invest in order to?
Go back to the previous chart, the five columns? Well, it looks like the minimum's 48. Am I reading that wrong?
Yeah.
Well, if you want to invest 7 million, right?
You said specify the minimum, 48. That's, that would be the minimum.
No, what I mean by the minimum is the number of units at 70% to 80% AMI that you want. So what you would say, let me be clear, is I want this, I'm circling the wrong screen. I'm sorry, I was being silly. You want 63 units at 70% to 80% AMI, and you're willing to invest 8 million for it.
So we need to pick a specific item for them to work off?
Basically. And this is based on 91 bedrooms and 32 bedrooms, right?
Yeah, I get that.
So, so we've got, essentially, we've got to decide how much money we want to spend. And if we pick one of those categories, then either you do a general solicitation that says we have a minimum of X two bedrooms, but we want you to maximize those within that dollar amount, or we specify exactly what we want if we know. That's, I mean, that's the key. How much money are you going to spend? And then you have this breakdown, and then we have to, at some point, break that down further into the number of units if it's different than what she has here.
Which is pretty much the way it normally works in most developments like this. Like I said, I want to maximize the most we can to help with the situation that we're in.
If, if 120 is the most units we can get on the property under the scenario that she has before you, and you increase the number of two-bedroom units beyond what her scenario is, then your 120 maximum is going to go down because you're going to be taking
Correct.
some one-bedrooms, two-one-bedrooms, if you will, and turn it into a two-bedroom. So I don't think it's one-to-one, but it's going to go down some. Space is the same, that's right.
Have we gotten any indication from the town of Manio? I'm sorry to change the subject, but I'm wondering if we're going through all of this and then we're going to get a no thanks, no connection to sewer, see you later. I'd be quite concerned if that's the case.
My discussion through town staff has been positive, although they aren't the decision makers.
Right, right.
But it has been positive to date.
But this won't come as a surprise to the town of Manio's council that, you guys want to build housing?
Yeah, I've had multiple conversations with them. We've publicized it a bunch.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And our next step is to go before their board and say, okay, we've made this decision. This is the number of units that this will allow us to do, and we need you to help us.
Seems like there's two decisions. Increase the density from 54, 58 to a maximum 120, and connect to the town wastewater treatment facility.
Well, yeah, the density's our decision, but the wastewater's their decision.
Is there, is there going to be any concern from a Utilities Commission standpoint on connecting into their sewer?
I would tell you that I don't know the answer to that. I would guess that it does not. I don't think that every development that chooses to connect to their system has to go through the Utilities Commission. That's a decision that they make internally based on their capacity and their needs and all that stuff. So they'll make the decisions as the hookups, especially when they're outside of the town. So that'll be a choice for the town.
Danny, there's plenty of capacity.
Okay.
We're looking to maximize the number of 60% and 70%, 80% units. It means minimizing the number of market rate units, right? And, and that's, that's, that's the $9 million participation.
The $9 million gives us the most in the 80% range.
Well, it gives us the most, yeah, because it's, it's same for, all the way through for the 60%. But it really, it really gives us seven more units in the, in the 70% to 80%.
In our last conversation, we had a long discussion about the market rate units are in there to make the deal work. And to the extent we can minimize them, then we meet our goals better. And that was the minimum that we could get and make the deal work.
Right.
Well, a couple of things. We've known we were going to have to spend some money on this. But also, in the scenario that Wally's talking about, if we go upwards of 9 million, to me, that's going to send a signal to the private sector. We, there's been a lot of people standing on the sidelines waiting for somebody to make a move, and it hasn't been happening to our liking. But, you know, I, I think that we can, that's going to show some earnest on our part.
I agree, Danny.
I agree, Danny. And we, and we've, we've had a discussion in the workshop with our finance director. If it's appropriate at this time, I'll make the motion to do the 9 million for the 24, 78, 18.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House. It's been seconded by the vice chair that we approve the 9 million county participation for 18, 78, and 24 units. And I'll open the floor for further discussion. I would like to respond to you, Commissioner Ross. I've had multiple conversations as well with Manio leadership, but once again, we, we didn't have anything concrete for them to look at with this. We'll have something, and then the, then the cards will be on the table, you know, once we make that presentation, and hopefully they'll be certainly receptive. I'm told that the capacity's there, so I'm, I'm hoping that.
Jim, you said capacity was there.
Capacity's there.
You know that for sure? I don't.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Okay. There should be no particular barrier to them agreeing to this connection to their wastewater treatment.
Say what now?
There should not be any technical logistical reason to say no.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
But if they do not, there are package systems that Bobby's looking at. Bobby, you might want to address that.
Well, if there are not, the question is, the question that I asked was, forget the money just for the moment, and money's always the driving force. But I wanted to try to find out, is there a package system that would work if you can't get a sewer connection? And the answer is, no one can tell you the answer to that without having a full site plan, know what your lock coverages are and all that sort of thing. But there are package systems out there that are smaller, that take up less room than traditional septic tanks and septic drain fields and all that sort of thing. The more expensive they are, the less space they take. But likely, if you had to do that, you're going to decrease your density because you're going to have to take some of that space that you've got for a building or for a required parking or for stormwater management or those other things that you've got to have site to make work. You're going to have to take some of that to hold your waste. And to the extent that you do that, it reduces density. But without sitting down with a site plan, saying how much money you're willing to spend so they know what kind of system to put, and then looking at the stormwater plan, no one can tell you what that means to your density.
Would it be possible to put that system on the other side of the creek on our land over there?
I would tell you, as with most things, if you've got enough money, most things are possible.
You just need a lift station and a pot.
It's just a ditch.
That's right. I mean, we pump it miles and miles in, in Stumpy Point to a, to a plant. And so the idea that you're going to pump it some distance to a treatment facility is going to be done. You're going to have to move it from this site to the Manio treatment facility anyway. And that's about the same distance.
Hotels, hotels do it. Standard, standard operating hotels. The point being that it's not.
The question becomes, is the site suitable and all that other stuff? So, I mean, yeah, those are all, I guess, things we have to look at. But we've, we've increased our cost by many multiples of what you just did. If we have to go in and put in a package system, then we're spending significantly more than 9 million, or we're cutting units to make our $9 million budget work.
Well, and over time also, because the operation of those plants requires constant monitoring.
Well, that's right. But there's also a cost, a sewer cost for the hookups that presumably that washes or close to washes.
Sarah or Marcia?
I just want to say, from point in that scenario, you know, purchasing an expensive property elsewhere and getting more units in a property outside of flood zone that is a better kind of configuration for development, that'll probably be cheaper and get more for you all.
Correct. If we're going to spend $2 million for a package plant to pump it across the thing, and we can go buy a five-acre site for $2 million, we're better off
Not too extra.
to buy the site almost.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still, I, I'm, I apologize, guys. I'm stuck on the, I believe, substantial group of people that helped make this county run, who are going to be left out of this. And I know we're talking about, we've got to do one thing at a time, we've got to walk before we run. And I absolutely agree with all of those considerations. And I'm not objecting to the target of 9 million, Steve, as you proposed. I am not an opponent to it. I'm simply looking at the 18 units there versus 33 units at the $8 million level. And again, it's not that I'm trying to cut a million from the county participation, but I'm seeing 33 participants as opposed to 18, which is why I'm proposing or supporting that option. Because I just feel really bad about saying we're going to, and it's not like we're looking at high-income people here, guys.
Can we put that slide back up here? I don't know why we've lost that slide.
Sarah, can you go back to that slide with the.
22.
Again, please.
I'm here. I don't know if it's not showing up.
It's up now.
It's up now.
So let me give you another scenario along the lines that Commissioner Ross just gave. We, we can't use public money for units above 80% you told us before. If we went down to the $7 million option, that still gives us 120 units. But is the 40, is the rent that we're calling market rent negotiable to something other than what the market will bear?
I've been thinking about that too, Bobby.
Work with the developer to set a rate to meet that gap that's not the true market rate, but it's above 80%.
Well, I think that goes back to that kind of visual I showed you earlier, which is that if you bring your, so part of why rents are so high in Dare is because of how expensive it is to build. And so it's all relative. And also, in the case of Bowser Town, the expense you have to carry for hazard insurance. And so that rent is high because it covers your expenses, your debt service, and then, of course, investor returns. And so at the end of the day, you could bring it, but there will be a gap in that unit that you cannot cover.
Well, let me ask it another way then. If the board is prepared to spend 9 million, and we went back and looked at the $7 million scenario, that means we've got $2 million that we can use to buy down those market rate rents, if you will, to try to entice the developer to do something less than true market, to hit the gap. for lack of a better term, that we've been talking about.
So that goes back to what you're allowed to buy down. And so above eighty percent AMI, you can't buy down.
You don't need to.
But you can offset the difference buying down the eighty percent. You can't, you can't buy down the market value, but if you buy down the eighty percent.
So I guess my question.
Well, you're already buying down the eighty percent. So I, I think there's a misconception that the market rate cross-subsidizes the affordable housing. It doesn't. The market rate covers itself, right? It's covering its own expenses, its own debt service, it's covering its own investor returns. So the market rate is what happens if you don't need any subsidy at all.
Well, then can we.
The eighty percent and the sixty percent all have a gap because those rents are not high enough to cover the, um, all the expenses associated with that.
So in, in your solicitation, can we do the solicitation at, again, the motion was nine million, so at nine million and put language in the wish list, if you will, that we'd like to negotiate the market rate, for lack of a better term, rental rates to, to meet a lower income than true market rate?
As long as they can do that without needing a penny from the county for those market rate.
Right. So, so, again, I'll go back to the, we, we, we're gonna put seven million in. There's gonna be forty-eight market rate. And what we're saying is, we're not putting any more money, but we, to do this deal, we want you to negotiate with us as to what market rate means. Is that?
You can do that. I mean, I just have a question about feasibility, right? Again, these numbers are, they don't come out of nowhere, right?
That's what we'll find out, right. But that's what we'll find out.
Yeah, but I think the entire point of this process is to get to a point where you know as a county what's feasible, and you have reasonable expectations of the development community.
What, what the board is struggling with and, and what we've struggled with from the inception, and as you well know, is our true goal, when we first started and, and didn't know anything about affordable housing at all, was to try to meet what we're now calling the gap. And it doesn't mean that these eighty percent and sixty percents aren't needed, but the initial goal was to try to meet that gap uh, for the two-income family with a teacher and a police officer or whatever that doesn't fall into any of the categories that we have. And so to the extent that we could find a way to negotiate with the developer to meet more of that gap, that's what we're trying to find a way to do without violating any of the rules. And so when you pick one of those alternatives, you have the most flexibility to negotiate that gap in the seven billion because you have the most market rate units in that. If you're doing it on the nine million dollar side, then you only have eighteen market rate units, and so you don't have very many units to negotiate with.
Where on that front, I would say that actually has more benefit, right?
Well, it, it could, on the one hand, it'd be more likely to do it because they're getting less money out of it. But on the other hand, it meets less of a need because there's fewer units.
Also reduces the pain to the tenant.
So, so the question becomes, what happens if we don't specify, but we come, but we put language in there that we would like to or intend to or want to negotiate with the developer? And then we can, when we choose a developer, we can sit down with them, have the discussion we're having right now, and see if there's a way to make it work. If it's not, then we're stuck with what we got. If it works, then it works. Is that possible?
I have many concerns, and I'm trying to process them all in my mind and put them out kind of in order of priority. Um, so what that means is that those units, you're proposing that those units would no longer be unrestricted, which is what's key about the market here. So you would be restricting them.
No.
And in restricting them, well, you are. I mean, if you're negotiating with the developer that they have to put the rents at a certain price point, have now restricted the units, right?
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is, is that we're gonna leave an opening to go to the developer to discuss that issue. If he comes back or, and says, no, I can't do it unless I've got eighteen at full market rate, and there's really nothing I can do to help you, then I guess so be it. But if there's a way to negotiate that and we let them know we want to, then hopefully we can make some headway there to, to meet a need that's not being met.
So I think in that sense, then my proposal is, you need to be very careful what your minimum moderate income is because, uh, you will have far fewer of them than you end up wanting, right? And so remember, these are nine-hundred-dollar rent units, which is what you all have been, um, asking for. And so with the nine-million scenario with seventy-eight moderate income units, you set that as your threshold. Of course, you know, you can have a wish list and negotiate on those eighteen unrestricted, and I'm gonna keep emphasizing that, uh, market rate units. There is already a lot of complexity in this, and you cannot, and I've said it a lot, but you cannot subsidize anything above that eighty percent AMI. You have to be very careful stepping into that space at all. Um, if they could make it work, they would. Uh, I will say that the returns are already, they're about ten percent cash-on-cash, which is pretty good. But selling this development, so in thinking about all the ways that investors think about a project, selling this development with the level of complexity will be incredibly challenging. So you're not, a developer's not really gonna be able to, uh, make their returns in the way that they might, or a market rate developer won't be able to make their returns in a way that they might traditionally do, which is that they get it operating it, and then they sell it at year five. You also have long-term holders, right? And they have pretty high yields that they expect from a deal like this. And the yield on this deal is not as high as, say, a market rate developer would want for their market rate apartments. So you start bringing down rents, and you start bringing down returns, making it that this deal doesn't work for anybody. You spend the next year and a half negotiating with the developer. At the end of the day, you don't have a project. So I just wanna emphasize, as you add complexity, you limit your pool, and you have way more time to get partners to the table that you can negotiate.
Sarah, what's the market rate per month that's built into these eighteen units? How much per month?
Uh, we've got about, it's a fourteen, thirteen-hundred, one-bedroom.
Thirteen-hundred, one-bedroom.
Yes. I don't have it open, so don't quote me right now.
Two bedrooms would be fourteen or fifteen-hundred.
Yes, I think it's like fifteen-fifty or something.
Okay.
Rob, I kind of agree with you on the, uh, I don't know about going the full nine million. I think kinda going down the middle lane right there with the eight million makes a little bit more sense to me. Gives us some flexibility, gives us a little bit more at market rate, makes it a little bit more, uh, sellable to the developers. That's just how I feel.
What, what's the numbers then on that, uh, Sarah? Thirty-three and sixty. What's, what's, what's the market? Just like you gave us the number on eighteen, what, what's?
Oh, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's about the same rents.
Same rent. Thirteen-hundred and fifty.
That same ballpark, yeah.
Yeah.
How are we getting to that?
I don't know. That's many assumptions I don't know.
Then the heck are we, I mean, that's not even close to where we wanted to be.
That's market rate, though.
That's market rate.
That's not, that's not the eighty percent.
Oh, okay. All right, I got you. Okay.
The eighty percent is, that seventy to eighty percent is the nine-hundred dollars for a one-bedroom. It's about eleven-hundred for a two-bedroom.
Okay, all right.
Which is what I've been told was what you wanted to maximize.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I would tend to lean that way as well. I mean, eighteen, we, we need to, we need to help that lower end is, get as many of them in as we, we possibly can. But I mean, it's not a perfect deal. I mean, this is the first.
I agree, Bob. It's not.
This is the first shot at this, and, and we will have other opportunities to hopefully do my terminology with respects to workforce versus essential, you know?
Well, we, we may, but the, the, if you look at the legislation, the legislation limits us to the seventy to eighty percent.
Right.
And so we're not gonna hit that gap, if you will, with the grant money that we got either because you can't go above that seventy, eighty percent.
Well, that even adds, and exacerbates the problem. And it says we're gonna cut you out on the Bowser Town, and you're completely cut out on the other.
Correct.
And that makes me feel very, very bad. It just does.
That's why I brought that up.
Yeah, I'm glad you did.
By using the grant money, that, if I, as I read that legislation, we can't do that.
I thought this was without grant money.
No, I'm saying.
It is, without, yeah.
The theory being, we could go with the, the lower-income stuff here, maximize it here, and then work on the gap with the grant money. But the answer is, you can't do that either because the gap, the grant money's limited by that seventy to eighty percent factor as well. By stat.
It's a shame we got those parameters.
I'm reading.
Let's go back to the original motion that's on the floor that's been seconded to approve the nine mil. You know, the floor's open for discussion. Do we, uh, is, is the maker of the motion interested in, in continuing it with that motion in the second? Or are we open to look at other options that we've just discussed?
I'd like to remain my motion the way it is, uh, because with the eight million, you're only really helping, you know, like, in, especially in the middle part of, I'm looking at that, sixty-three, uh, people, whereas at the nine million, you're helping seventy-eight. So, and that's, and that's the, the area that I think we're all concerned about in that seventy-eight percent. So I, I would like to keep mine as, as the motion is stated.
Steve, that, that seventy, eighty percent means your income is capped at like forty-six thousand.
That's right.
That excludes every single teacher and.
That's, that is correct. That's.
That's the reason I was.
And the thing Commissioner House is, we got thirty-five million dollars to go after that market with.
All right, uh, I, I see your point. I see your point.
Yeah, that's all we're trying to clarify.
All right, I, I will change my motion to go with eight million figure.
Is the second, uh, in agreeance with that?
Second, in agreeance.
Okay, second is in agreeant with that as well. So the motion now on the floor is, God, we keep losing the screen. Why, Matt, why do we keep losing these screens?
Twenty-two, please.
Go back to that grab screen again.
Can't we keep this thing up here on the screen?
Thank you.
She's controlling.
Is it, does it timeout?
No.
No, I'm moving the screen because I thought that you all were making a motion on that, so I was going to the next step.
Could you at least leave it up there for a few more minutes and, and quit playing with the screen? Thank you. Uh, the motion now on the table is eight million, and it's been seconded by the Vice Chair. Now the floor continues to be open for discussion.
It's a compromise. It's a. We're gonna really be analyzing this to death. Uh, there's a measure of, uh, we've come, we've, we've come to this point with, uh, looking at it from a, from a intellectual standpoint. I can, I can support the eight million. I'm, I'm ready to roll.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Kell. Anyone else then? All right, with that said, it's time to, um, move on this motion. Those in favor of the motion that's been presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign? The motion carries unanimous then. All right, you've got, um, Sarah, next step, you've got, um, number one out of the way. So we will.
Can I change the slide now?
So number two, we will engage, um, the town of Manio. And number three, um, you'll draft a resolution, I mean, a solicitation?
It's a solicitation for a development partner. Um, the reason that the order here is very important. We won't start soliciting developers until we have some sort of guarantee from Mantio because there's a lot of work they have to do on their side to put together responses. And one of the key things we have to be able to say is, we've got the sewer from Mantio.
Yep.
The second thing is that we're gonna start the rezoning process, which isn't here, but is less kind of risky. Still, be certain that you can move that through, which is that this property will need to be rezoned to allow for a hundred-and-twenty units. Um, and then once.
We can do that.
So that's why it's not.
That's not gonna be a hurdle.
That, that's not gonna be a hurdle.
The zoning issue is not an issue.
Yeah, so I didn't think so, but I'll say, we know that the sewer is a hurdle. And so we don't want to release solicitation. I say here draft, but I'm gonna start writing this tomorrow. Um, it really is just, we won't release it until we can say for sure that Manio is committed.
We understand.
Okay, we, just to be clear, you all said zoning won't be an issue. The zoning is, is in fact a decision that we have to make for rezoning. But there is a process we have to go through and a set of rules we have to go through. And if we can't follow those rules, we can't rezone it. So it's not necessarily a given that we rezone it.
Do we know the rules?
That's why we have you.
We know the rules. We reviewed the rules.
You keep us in line.
We will. We just have to go through the process. I, I don't want you all up here today saying it's a done deal when we haven't even started the process. Okay. Thanks for sharing.
All right, anything else, Sarah, that you have?
Uh, no, that concludes the presentation. I think our internet's gone out, but that's the last slide.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Marcia.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Marcia, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to items ten, eleven, and twelve, and Noah Gilman's gonna make those presentations.
Good morning, Noah.
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, my first item is the subdivision, Hatteras Island Reserve Phase Two. It's a seven-lot subdivision in Hatteras. Um, they're proposing common driveways for the second phase, which was done also in the first phase, which was reviewed earlier in the year. The subdivision ordinance allows for the use of common drives that the planning board determines, and the Board of Commissioners occurred that the common drives will not endanger or diminish public safety and welfare. The planning board reviewed this proposed division at their November eighth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, and voted to recommend approval of the preliminary plat with a determination that the common drive did not diminish or endanger public safety and welfare. Any motion by the Board of Commissioners today to approve the preliminary plat should include a similar, should include similar language. They're proposing that, um, four lots will share a forty-foot easement to access those four, and then three lots will share a twenty-four-foot common drive. Um, Michael Strater of Quabell and Associates is here today, who can answer any questions on the subdivision as well.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
No.
Pleasure, the board.
Commissioner, do you recommend preliminary plat approval in concurrence with the use of common drives recommended by the planning board?
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. The floor's open for further discussion. Hearing none, Dan, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Thank you, Noah.
Yeah, the next item is, um, special use permit for the K. Hatteras Electric Membership Corporation.
Noah, has everyone been, been.
Nah.
All right, before you start, everybody that's gonna participate in that, please be square.
Um, special use permit request for twenty-twenty-one for the K. Hatteras Electric Membership Corporation for a new operations center. A request for a special use permit for an operations center for the K. Hatteras Electric Membership Corporation has been submitted for review by Quabell Associates on behalf of the Power Co-op. The proposed facility is located in Buckson and is identified as parcel zero-one, seven-zero, seven-five, zero-zero-zero with the Dare County tax mapping. The parcel is zoned R-two-A, and private and public utility facilities are permitted as a special use. The applicant is proposing to build a fifty-by-one-hundred-and-forty-eight foot, um, foot building that will serve as the operation facility and provide office space, conference rooms, a large kitchen, restrooms, and multiple truck bays. The parcel for the proposed operations center is currently vacant. The applicant currently operate part of their electric utility facility on the parcel directly adjacent to the east of the proposed site. The parcels to the north and the west of the proposed site are residential, and the parcel is boarded on the south by canal. As part of the SGP application, the applicant has submitted an Appendix B or a site plan that shows the proposed improvements. Some portions of the proposed improvements will be constructed inside the Coastal Area Management Act jurisdiction and will have to adhere their regulations as well as Dare County zoning ordinance. The Dare County Planning Board reviewed the, reviewed the proposed, uh, special use permit at their November eighth, twenty-twenty-one meeting and deemed the conditionals. at their November eighth, twenty-twenty-one meeting and deemed the conditionals reasonable and appropriate. The Dare County Fire Marshal has reviewed the proposed site plan and has indicated that he has no issues with the proposal. A draft S U P and site plan is attached for the board's review, and other conditions may be added to the draft special use permit if needed as a result of the December sixth, twenty-twenty-one Commissioners' meeting. And Dylan Tillit from Quabon Associates is here as well.
Dylan, could you come up too?
Yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Dylan Tillit. I'm an engineer with Quabon Associates. I'm the primary civil engineer for this project, and Mr. Gilm's staff report did a great job outlining it, but myself and a representative owner is here this morning. If you guys have any additional questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tillit. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Tillit?
I do. I have, actually, I have them of the owner. The owner's here as well.
Mr. Doug Chesson is here this morning to represent Cape Hatteras Electric.
Okay, could you come up, please? If you haven't been sworn, you need to be sworn as well. And I'm gonna ask both of you on behalf of the owner, do you all consent to placing the file that you've presented in this into evidence before the board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and do you all consent and agree with the testimony that Noah's given so far?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then do you consent to the terms and the conditions of a special use permit?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, county manager. Anyone else have any questions of the applicants?
I, I have not had any phone calls or any objection to this.
Looks like it's gonna be a really nice facility for them, Danny.
A lot of planning. It's not anything that was done overnight. It's been a three- to five-year plan at a minimum.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Normally, we have, and I know part of this backs up to some residential properties, and normally, we have vegetative buffers between those. I noticed in number seven on the chain link, where it discusses the chain link fencing, that you have slats that are going in there that will serve the purpose of the, of the buffer.
That's correct, yes, sir, Mr. Commissioner. That was discussed during the planning board meeting. Typically, a opaque wooden fence or a vegetative buffer is required in a, the buffer against a residential zone like that. Due to the proximity of the wastewater system and a majority of the area along this line, the planning board deemed it was, they recommended approval of opaque plastic slats to go inside of the chain link fence to serve as that opaque buffer versus the wooden fence.
And it will be, you can't see through it here anywhere. It don't have cracks in it. I mean, it's basically serving the purpose of, of a true buffer.
That's, my understanding is it serves the same purpose as a wooden fence. I'm not saying you can't a hundred percent see through it, you know, there are cracks in it, just like a wooden fence, but it, it serves the purpose of an opaque buffer, in my opinion.
Ten-four, just wanna get that on-
Yeah, it's got aesthetic quality to it. They, they look good.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else have any questions of applicant? All right, pleasure, the board.
I move that S U P four, twenty-twenty-one, associated site plan for the proposed operation be approved.
Okay, is a motion on the floor. My Commissioner announced to approve. It's been seconded, I believe, by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, and those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice facility.
Yes, sir. The third item is a request to close a portion of Beacon Road in Rhode Anthe. Daniel Kerlackian is requesting that an unimproved eastern terminus and cul-de-sac portion of Beacon Road in Rhode Anthe be permanently closed pursuant to the requirements of North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A dash two forty-one. Attorney David Dixon is representing Mr. Kerlackian. He is here to present.
Okay. Bobby, you need to be sworn in?
Uh, not for this one, I see.
It's a public hearing.
Uh, is the attorney have anything he'd like to say?
All we're asking for is a public hearing. I'll have a lot of things to say at a public hearing.
Yeah, that's what I thought we did.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. All right.
Motion to hold a public hearing on January third.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Ross. Commissioner Ross made a motion to hold a public hearing on January third, and we had a seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Yes, sir, thank you.
County manager?
Chairman, item thirteen is the bid award for the Buxton Avon Beach Nursery Project, and Dave Clausen will make that presentation.
Good morning, David.
Good morning. Okay, um, sorry, let me. What Cheryl's handing out is just detail to these slides, so if you wanna see what the FEMA calculation is or the detail of the bids, it's on those sheets. Okay, go back. All right, thanks. So, as you know, we, we opened bids on, I forgot the date, November seventeenth. We did have three bidders, and your low bidder was Great Lakes Dredge and Dock at about, right at thirteen-point-seven percent less than C S E's and FEMA's estimates. They had done a joint estimate. The construction bid was for twenty-two, starting May first and ending September thirtieth. We're recommending an award at the maximum that the permits allows, which is two-point-two million yard, cubic yards, which is one million cubic yards in Avon and one-point-two million in Buxton. Hachin got excited when she notified in her meeting, which is in, in her memo, which is in your packet, it is four-point-three million dollars less than what we got in the beach nourishment model, but that estimate used two-point-one million cubic yards. So, at two-point-two, it's three-point-six. And FEMA's sharing in the project, so we gotta reduce their share as well. So, when you reduce the FEMA share for the bid being less than the estimate, we're two-point-nine million dollars to the good from what we planned on. And the breakdown right now of what the shares will be, we do have a state grant of one-point-five million. FEMA agreed to this calculation and this share last week, six million, three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, and from the county beach fund, twenty-one, six-hundred-and-eighty-four. There is one outstanding item. We still have to bid the sand fencing portion, which for Buxton FEMA pays for. Avon, they did not, and we'll do that this month. And then on the permitting side, we've got the FEMA biological payments, and the EAs are done, the National Park Service EA is done. We've got the Kama permits. We have the National Park Service special use permits. Now, we're just waiting on the core. And I'll have to, if you got any questions on that one, I'll give it to Bobby. But, but C S E is gonna talk with us about what we did with the towns, and they're looking at how they do it with this project. So, our, the sheet you have is just a fact sheet, which is the schedule for everything. What we're looking at is, we still have to bid the county debt for this, and we'll be doing, really, that debt will be in two pieces. We'll have like a short-term debt for the FEMA share while we wait to get reimbursed by FEMA. And, and when we get reimbursed, we'll, we'll get seventy-five percent of the draw request, and then the state shares twenty-five percent of that number, and we don't get that till the end. So, we need a short-term piece of debt to float the cash, and then a five-year piece of debt for our piece for the twenty-one, six-eighty-four.
If I could just recap real quick in my mind, we had a budget of thirty million. It came in at twenty-five-nine, and we saved four-point-one versus budget. However, FEMA has reduced their reimbursement by one-point-four million, or four-point-three million less than budget, and they've reduced their contribution by a million-four, leaving us with a net two-point-nine benefit versus budget.
Right.
Okay.
That's right. So, we'll be, we're starting the, the process for the debt issuance. We're, I've already sent the letter to the General Assembly and the Legislative Committee. My application is due by January the fourth, and we'll have the board be adopting resolutions at your two January meetings. Actually, the L G C meeting is February first, so we gotta get all of our stuff done in January. So, what we're asking you to is to do, air action is award the bid to Great Lakes Dredge and Dock for twenty-five million, eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand. You authorize the county manager to proceed with contract subject to L G C approval, and that should say February the first for the related debt.
Dave, just a couple of quick questions, just out of curiosity. I noticed that the base yardage, eight-hundred thousand, was like eight-eighty a yard. And then the alternate two-hundred was eight dot, why is there a difference in those figures? Do you know?
I do not know unless it has something to do with the mobilization. I mean, they, they charged an additional, or the bid was an additional twenty-five thousand of mobilization for the additional cubic yards, but otherwise, I do not know.
In the scheme of things, that eight eighty is really not a bad number.
No, and, and that is in the C S E memo. They included a graph which is on their page five out of eight of all of their recent projects and what their per cubic yard prices were.
To back that stat up, is, if you look at forty-six, page forty-six on our, on our packet, this is a, a unit cost of eleven and three-quarters.
Right.
When you look at that compared to what's going on in Myrtle Beach and other areas, and the challenges that they have out here, that is very competitive. That's a significant figure.
Yeah, I think it is too, Danny. I'm, I'm, that was, that was one of the things that first popped out at me when I saw that, so. All right, that's all I have. Anybody else have any questions, Dave?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I, I moved that we award the bid to Great Lakes for twenty-five million, eight-seventy for our twenty-twenty-two project, and authorize county manager out to proceed with the contract subject to local government commission approval in February of the related debt.
Second.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Couch, and seconded by Commissioner House. Floor is open for additional comments. Hearing none, those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Dave.
It came up in your discussion about the core, the core came through for us. The, we got our permits in time. We're gonna be on the L G C agenda tomorrow, so we shouldn't have those problems that we had discussed in previous meetings. When you get an opportunity, I've talked to the staff level, but the political folks, Representative Murphy's office, Senator Burr's office, Senator Tillis's office, helped us a bunch in our process of trying to get that logjam broken with the core. I'll defend the core a little bit. The local folks, the Wilmington district, it wasn't a problem they created. They weren't the holdup. It was in Washington, D.C. that was the holdup. And the folks in Washington, D.C. made it happen. And then, when they did, our local core folks came in over the Thanksgiving holidays to get those permits issued, so we would have them in time to make that L G C meeting tomorrow. So, I thanked them by email, but I wanna thank them publicly as well for, for their hard work and efforts.
Absolutely.
And we don't expect similar problems with these permits. We would expect these to go through on time without those issues.
Bobby, thank you to you and Dave both. Lot of work. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, you have the approval of the minutes. You have the Social Services Division, one-time unrestricted stimulus payment for young adults budget amendment. You have the Dare County Health and Human Services Public Health Division, increased state funding for community elixirs to care for O D prevention and response. You have the Dare County Health and Human Services Public Health Division, continued funding for COVID-nineteen E L C, enhancing detection activities. You have the North Carolina Governor's Crime Commission grant award.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
And that brings us to your board appointments. The first is the tourism board. You have four entities that have representatives. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, we'll do these one at a time?
Yes, sir, if you would, please.
Okay. First is the Dare County Restaurant Association. Karen Lutman Davis's term has expired, and the membership of the Restaurant Association recommends that Mark Ballack serve as their representative.
Move to approve Mark Ballack.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman to approve Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, gosh, I heard a couple of Commissioner House, I believe, Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. Doug Brenly's term has expired, and the association has elected Gary Berryman to serve as their representative.
Move to approve Gary Berryman.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve Gary Byrne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the town of Kill Devil Hills. Ivy Ingram's term has expired. He's eligible for reappointment. The Kill Devil Hills Commissioners have designated the following nominees in their order of preference for the town's representative. One would be Ivy Ingram, two, John Winley, and three, Bernard B.J. McAvoy.
Move to approve Ivy Ingram.
There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chair to approve Ivy Ingram.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the town of Nagseth. Webb Fuller's term has expired. The Nagseth Commissioners have designated the following, following nominees in their order of preference for the town's representative. Mayor Pro Tem Michael Sears is first, second's Mayor Ben Cahoon, and third is Commissioner Kevin Brinkley.
Move to approve Michael Sears.
Vice Chairman move to approve Michael Sears. This is a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Your upcoming board appointments in January, you have no appointments in February. You have two terms on the planning board. In March, you have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council with one term expiring, and the Working Waterman Commission with one term expiring. That would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager. That brings us to item sixteen, which is the county managers and Commissioners' business. And Commissioner Couch, do you mind kicking that off this afternoon?
Yes, I would, and good morning again, everyone. I wanted to bring to our attention, you know, with, with the loss of Ms. Virginia and also Eddie Green. We had a gentleman down in Hatteras that passed, and I didn't want time to go by without him being recognized. His name was Raish Beck, Horatio Beck. He was the captain of the Good News. He was a, for thirty years plus. He was with Juan Chees Fish Company, and he was an old-school Hatteras guy, you know, kinda inclined to settle things with his fists rather, rather than talking out. I mean, you can look at Old Christmas. You can look at the old Toot and Tell it over here at Midway, and then, of course, the Drafty Tavern, and he was right there in it. I just, going back in nineteen fifty-four, we, we got a highway on Hatteras from Hatteras Inlet all the way to where the private Rhode Anthe and Pea Island boundary is. And prior to that, prior to nineteen fifty-four, each village, Chickama Kamiko did have two schools, but each village had its own school. And when the highway went in and there was an opportunity to consolidate the schools, the fights were unbelievable. And Raish Beck was right in the middle of it. The Kinnick Boys did not like Hatteras. The Hatteras Boys did not like the Kinnickers. The Rhode Anthe Boys, they hated everybody. And they were right, Raish was right there in the middle of it, so much that you'll remember Jack Cahoon. He, he married, he was a county, Bobby wasn't a county manager for years, Jack Cahoon? This was in the fifties. He, he got a, a set of boxing gloves to let- He got a set of boxing gloves to let these kids hash it out. And, you know, it looks like ancient history now, but it was, I mean, quite a mark in history and heritage down there. I want to say one thing real quickly about Raish. Again, he was hard scrabble guy, but the older he got, he really mellowed. But I was very familiar with his background. I just had my tour bus. This was probably 12, 13 years ago, and across from his house, Raish, let me back up a little bit. He was the grandson of Levine Midget. And if you're familiar with the book The Hattersmen by Ben Dixon McNeil, that book won the Mayflower Award, and there were three people that essentially told McNeil everything he needed to know: Richard Daley, Martin Tolson, and of course Levine. But I pulled down Lar Lane across from Levine's house, which Raish inherited, and the sign, I wanted to go down there and talk about Chickama Kamiko Life Saving Station and everything, and I saw very clearly that the sign said no trespassing a couple of places, so I went down there anyway. And I got down there, said what I needed to do, and turned around and was coming back out. There was a bunch of people from one of the timeshares up here, 20 some odd people, tourists on this bus, and here he come. He was on his tractor, and he cut me off, he turned sideways, and never took his eyes off of me. And I was like, here we go. And he come right up to the window, and he said, "Son, what'd that sign say?" I said, "Captain Raish, it said keep out, but I'm just here talking about your grandfather, Levine, and his dog." And he looked at me a minute, and he said, "Open the door." And I walked around, and you could, I mean, these people are from all that area, you could hear them breathing, it was that quiet. And he got, he got up on my bus and said, "Let me tell you about that dog." Dog's name was Fondy. And he proceeded to go into this story about when the commander of the district, the fifth district, came down from Portsmouth to do his inspection of the station, and this was all spit and polish. I mean, these guys were on their best behavior. But Levine and Raish had this dog named Fondy, and the dog came out first. This was when they were raising the flag. The dog came out first. The two Coast Guardmen followed it. The commander got ready to object. I'm paraphrasing what Raish said here, but Levine said, "Just watch this, sir, just watch this." That dog came out, sat right there in front of the flag, and while they raised the flag, the dog sat there and watched that flag go all the way up, and stood there at attention. In front of the inspector was this dog who knew the drill. And Raish told that story, got a couple of laughs out of it, and then looked at me and said, "Carry on." And so I got a free pass to go down Lar Lane from then on. He was really, I mean, old-school guy. He had, there's quite a number of adventures they had there on, in his years with Juan Chees Fish Company. As you guys know, that is a, I made one trip when I got out of high school, and I learned real quick that that life was not for me. They'd have made a pretzel out of me. Couple other things. You've probably seen the notices that the Rhodanthe Bridge is 95% done. The cranes are out of there. It is starting to clean up very nicely. According to the meeting on the virtual meeting, they're looking like they're going to be ready to go in February. That's going to be here pretty quick, but let's keep our eyes on that because that's going to be a really nice. The DOT has done a great job. Flatiron has done a great job. It's going to be quite a testimony here as we're bridging our way through some of these hotspots. Just a couple other things real quickly. Bob Dole, we know that he passed yesterday, but he had a connection to Hatters Island and his wife, of course, Libby Dole. Was it Libby or Lyddie? I think it was Libby.
Libby.
Libby, okay, yeah. She's a North Carolina native, but they were in Hatters, and Bob Dole picked up a couple of, picked up the War Zone videos about World War II, and sent a message, a note to the Graveyard Land Museum that he found that those videos fascinating because he's a war hero. And I was just always marveled at that. He was the guy who ran for president. He lost to Clinton, but that he was perfectly, I mean, he had an appreciation for this area. Coming up through the Refuge this morning, there were hundreds of swan in there with the blue sky and the silvery water and all that white speckled in there is really quite a sight. I never get tired of riding through the Refuge. Last thing, in light of the health issue I was going through, I want to thank the public for your support and prayers, and when your body's telling you to do something, don't ignore it. So, and thank you, Board, for your support as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Amen. Thank you, Danny. Glad you've got a good, clean bill. Commissioner Bateman?
Danny, thanks for sharing that about the captain. I said, you know, we live in a great place down here, and folks like that is what makes the Outer Banks just special. Kitty Hawk lost two really fine citizens. One, first one was Richard Reed. Richard was planner in the town of Kitty Hawk for a number of years, and he later, a little bit later, ran for town council, and he passed away, I believe, the end of last week. And the other one, Helen Weagle. Helen Weagle was a member of the Lions Club, member of the planning board there in Kitty Hawk. Super-nice lady, always a giver, and both of them were just volunteers for everything that came up. They would volunteer for it. So two fine Kitty Hawkers and Dare County people we lost. Once again, the Motorsports Charity Group and Sandy, I can't say enough what that group and Steve, those guys do for Dare County and for the kids, for Toys for Tots. That's very, very important and very big. This thing with the housing, we all need to lobby everybody we can within the town of Manio. This is big, and what it's going to take is the cooperation of every municipality because this one project is going to happen in Manio. It's also going to happen in other municipalities, too, and it's going to take their cooperation, not only in zoning, but also in political support to make these things happen for the county. So I appreciate what everybody's done, and that's it, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well said. We definitely need to work hard to lobby Manio. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say thank you to Claudia Neal for her 10-year service pen, obviously from the things that were said about her and the comments that she made herself. Quite an impressive young woman. Again, one of the fine employees that we have in Dare County. And also congratulate Cameron for his award as Employee of the Month. Really appreciate that. I'd like to say thank you to the Board for allowing me to serve again as Vice Chairman for the next year. I really, I really appreciate your support on that, guys. And lastly, I'd like to say, totally back up everything Irvin just said regarding lobbying town of Manio for their support. I think it's obvious from the discussion that while not impossible to do otherwise, it will be extremely, extremely difficult to do it without their support. And there's, not getting too far out on a limb here, but there's not a whole lot of reasons not, for them to be supportive of this. It can only help. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I mirror those comments, not only us as a board, but also the general public, too. You know, lobbying town of Manio, this is something that's desperately needed in our community. We're doing all that we can to help the situation. It just takes time. Also, to, I would be remiss if I myself did not remember Senator Bob Dole. I worked with him back in the 80s on a few projects. Very extraordinary person, and also worked with his wife, Libby, when she was the CEO of the American Red Cross. It's devastating to see these older gentlemen with the vast knowledge they have passing away. We've noticed that several times this year already. My heart goes out to his family and to Libby as well. As you know from our last meeting, we put out a resolution opposing the shrimp amendment. And I personally went to the November 19th meeting at the, in Morehead City. There were several people that spoke. Most of the people that spoke were also shrimpers from the area opposing it. Out of the over, I think it was 63 or 68 comments that were made, only one was in support of it. Not only was Dare County representative with our resolution, but also Beaufort, Craven, Pamlico Counties also put out resolutions opposing it. The one thing that did make an impression with the Board was the fact that not only did we send a resolution opposing it, we also sent a cover letter with it, too. And when they were making their discussions on the shrimp amendment, several of those commissioners actually brought up quotes from that letter and also from the statements that were made by the different county commissioners that were there presenting, and also from the resolutions that not only we passed, but also those counties passed, too. So we made a difference. The Commission did select, there was a motion to accept the full recommendation that was presented, and it was seconded, it was shot down. A second motion was made, and that motion did stand, and now goes to legislative review and also to review from the Department of DEQ. And that does prevent the trawling in the crab sanctuaries, to prohibit trawling in the bog sound and the tributaries except for the intercoastal waterway, and prohibit trawling in the Carolina Yacht Basin except for the intercoastal waterway. All of the count, all of the waters that we were concerned about around the Roanoke Island area, they will remain open to shrimping. Those are the only areas that are closed, the ones that I just mentioned. The Commission also chose management options to change the flexible opening date on the special secondary nurseries to a static September 1st of each year, whereas in the past, it would fluctuate from dates. Now they've made it a static date. That's the date. Continue collaboration with commercial stakeholder groups through the industry work group to identify and test gear modifications to further reduce bycatch in the shrimp fishery. They also wanted to provide adaptive management for the future to address issues related to submerged aquatic vegetation and division of marine fisheries, collaboration with the Coastal Habitat Protection Plan to support the staff of the Habitat and Water Quality Advisory Committee and Stakeholders Group. Also to maintain the existing head rope limits for shrimp trawls in intercoastal waterways, but allow for additional head rope restrictions to be implemented to resolve user conflicts. And also an increase in collaboration with the CHPP and staff or the Habitat and Water Quality Advisory Committees to study the water quality in the fishing, especially in the shrimp nursery areas. So like I said, those were the changes that were made or proposed, and now they've gone to the Secretary of DEQ. So for right now, shrimping is what it is. We've all talked about flounders. Flounders are now coming up for an additional review. And for the Southern Flounder Fish Management Amendment III. Further restrictions on flounders will be passed or will not be passed, whatever you propose. One of the things on there, believe it or not, maybe you've heard about this, maybe you haven't, but one of the things that they are proposing is to pull all gill nets out of the sounds. We have, this is now being reviewed, and it's just the starting basis of it, and the Commission has put it now to the Fisheries Management Plans, and I'll be keeping a close eye on that, and have actually reached out to some people that are on that committee to actually help possibly sit in on those meetings if I can, and get a better understanding of what's going on. So I wanted to report that back to you. For Dare County, it was a win. We saved our fishing, our shrimping in this area, so. Our day in history. The 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution was ratified today. That was the, the 13th Amendment is the one that actually abolishes slavery in the United States. So that was actually ratified today through the means of Congress and from the Constitution of how many states have to ratify it. So it was ratified this day in 1865. I'm sorry, 18, yeah, 1865. And on this day in 1964, more positive note, you all remember the Stop Animation Christmas Story of Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer? It first aired today in 1964 on NBC. And with that, Merry Christmas, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Steve. To half of the Board, I know you worked really hard on that shrimp issue and representing us, and I really appreciate that, and I'm glad that certainly worked out. That was huge, and glad the Board saw to do the right thing. So thank you for representing us.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, sir. Number one, congratulations to you and to Wally as Chair and Vice Chair for another year. Good to have you back in the saddle. Number two, thank you, Dare County Schools. We still have a few of the Board of Education with us. Thanks for hanging in there. Superintendent, and the musical program was fabulous. They do such a nice job, and it just warms the heart to get the season going. So thank you for that and for hanging in there with us all day. Number three, the toy run, 25,000 from our motorcycle Jeep run. That is superb. If you've ever seen it, it's three nights based on age groups, and the Dare Center and the number of people and kids they serve is just, well, it's terrific. It's really something to see, and it's another example of the kind of community we have here and how wonderful the job we do. Housing, I'm just going to be brief.
Hey.
What's this? Larry the Cable Guy?
Yeah.
Get her done. Number five, in closing, congratulations, Danny. I love the Christmas attire, the shirt, the tie, and welcome back. Glad you're in good shape. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. I appreciate it. Commissioner Tobin?
I love the get her done.
I'm done. I am done.
Okay, I'd like to extend my condolences to the Dole family. As everybody else has said, Senator Bob Dole was truly a great leader in our country, and his leadership left a big imprint, and just I'd like to thank him and his family for everything that he did, and may rest in peace. The dredge, the dredge is coming along great. Every week, we have a meeting, Zoom meeting on Tuesday, and everything is still on schedule. I know I'd mentioned at the last meeting that there was a steel escalation clause in our contract, and yes, steel has gone up significantly, and so they did execute that escalation clause, but it only amounted to $99,000. So it wasn't a huge hit, but it was a hit. The big things that are going on right now with the dredge, the dredge is, as you all know, is both sides are put together, and the official line boring of the hinge assemblies are being done, both, on both ends of the dredge. So that takes about a week, so we should have that thing actually together permanently. The floor for the Pilot House is done and has been painted, and that also gets hinge assemblies on them. It is not installed on the ship yet, so once it gets installed, they'll do the same type of thing that they do on the main hinges.
of thing that they do on the main hinges, and they'll do that line boring. The pilot house is coming along real good. It should be done here in another month or so. Delivery date's still on time, still sometime in April, so things are looking good.
Jim, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Just a question, and I'll probably use the wrong terminology again, I always do, but those cutter head designs, we were gonna get to see if we could get a mold or something?
The cutter head designs, they decided against doing the molded ones because of the timeline, and it's much better to make them physically weld them together, much more economical. You can also use, when you do the molded ones, the cast ones, you have to go in and clad them on the inside with, you know, with a high wear steel. The ones that you manufacture, you can manufacture using a high wear steel. So there's a lot of advantages, but yes, they are currently being done, so.
Well, I knew that was a hangup at one time.
That was a hangup, but that hurdle's been crossed, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Thank you.
Next up, as you all know, we got a thirty-five million dollar grant from the state to enter into the affordable housing. The next step is to do a request for qualification. I took the liberty to take the legislation and craft a RFQ from it, and with a lot of help from our county attorney and input, some lines were deleted and some lines were added to make that happen, and I would like the board to vote on this, so we can issue it tomorrow. And it will give thirty days for the responses to come back, which puts the final response coming back on January seventh. Bobby, do you have anything to add to that?
On your desk in front of you, you have a copy of the RFQ that we've looked at. I've looked at it, made some changes in it. Dave and Dustin have looked at it, made some changes, and so we've run it through our staff and have it in a position, attached to the RFQ is the legislation as well. And if you'll notice in the legislation, this is a little bit different than how we would normally do things, but it, the legislation is designed, it says you, we have thirty-five million dollars, and we have to go out and identify partners. So we've gotta find a builder somewhere to come in and work with us, and that builder has to meet certain criteria that are set forth in that legislation. We bring that builder on, and then we negotiate, unlike what we just did with DFI, we bring that builder on and negotiate a deal to spend this thirty-five million dollars on affordable housing in Dare County, subject to the conditions that are contained in the legislation. And so what we have to do to start is really just pick the builder, and so this RFQ is what we would send out and then see which builders we hear from. Again, we've got the criteria in the RFQ that gotta meet that criteria, and then...
Do we have a list of builders we're targeting to send this to? Or is this kind of just a public notice in the paper, and anybody can respond?
I think a little bit of both.
Okay.
I think we do a general...
Because I've had some questions from the community, and I said, geez, there's some restrictions on who can.
Yeah, there's some restrictions. You have to have done affordable housing, and you have to have participated in some kind of a forgivable loan at some point in the past as well.
That's gonna narrow the field.
That's gonna narrow the field, and so we'll see what we get, and then we'll do just like we do in the normal RFQ process. We'll bring all the requests in. If we get dozens, then we'll have the CIP meet, and we'll narrow it down like we normally do. If we only get a few, then we'll bring the packages in and let the people that present the RFQs present to you all, and then you all will select whoever you choose to be the private partner, and then we sit down with them and work out our deal.
Bobby.
And so that's, that's the process, that's what this contemplates. This complies with the statute, and use Rob's terminology, if we're gonna get her done, then the sooner we get this thing out, the sooner we get them back, and the sooner we can get moving to move this thing on. But this is independent of what we just did a few minutes ago.
Notice in the, in the closing date, it's only a month from today. Is that enough time to get proper responses on an RFQ?
It's normal, what we would normally do. We can certainly make that longer if you all think it needs to be longer. Dustin reviewed it, it's what we would typically do. Dave has reviewed it.
Honestly, I got, I've been getting calls about this at least up to through a month ago.
Yeah, they know.
I got two this morning, so.
It's RFQ, and that's my question too, Wally.
The, the thing that's attached to this, it ain't just a builder off the street.
Correct.
As you pointed out, it's somebody that has specific qualifications. So that could be from all over the state. So that's why I'm wondering, folks who are basically somewhat unfamiliar with us, is this enough time reasonable? If it is, fine. If it isn't, we need to add two weeks, or we add?
I don't know if I know the answer to that. I mean, certainly if you give them more time, you have the opportunity to get more responses. Maybe we make it seventy-five days, I don't know, but if, that'd be the pleasure of the board.
It just seems short to me.
What are we asking for them to give us specifically? The qualifications?
Right. You remember those spiral notebooks we got that says who their team is?
We're not getting a bit on a project, just, you know, who are you and what can you do?
Who are you, what do you do, who's your team?
That's usually sitting in a cabinet.
How many things have you done? How do you meet those criteria?
Here's my resume.
Exactly.
Right, exactly.
If that's enough time to get word out, then that's fine. I just wanna be sure.
There's financial questions in there, too.
And certainly if...
Yeah, but again, it's what they do every day.
Yeah, but it's their financial statements to be sure they've got the wherewithal to do what we're asking them to do.
Sure. But once this legislation dropped in the House, or in the Senate, rather, there, that word went out, and there's companies...
Trust me, everybody is brothers aware.
Yeah.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin to get this RFQ out. I heard a second.
Second.
From Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
If it's a like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, guys. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple other items as well, and that is, we will not have a December the twentieth meeting. Our next meeting will be January the third, twenty-twenty-two. And I just wanna wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy, Happy New Year. December will come and go, just like all the other months, very, very quickly.
Yes.
So anyway, once again, thank you for your support in my chairmanship and the vice chairman's, vice chairmanship. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to having another successful year in twenty-twenty-two. So thank you again. County manager, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir, I have just one thing. The capital improvement committee met on Friday. As you know, we have had our EMS stations on a list to do things for a while, for several years, and we enlisted several meetings ago Oakley Collier, the architects, to come in and do some work on these projects, and they have. And we're at a point now where we need you all to make a decision to let us go forward. Oakley Collier presented to the board really just a site plan that said, okay, we've met with the EMS, we've met with the county, we've met with the towns, we've met with Rodanthie, with the projects that we're doing in conjunction with somebody else, and we know what their programming needs are. And with those programming needs, here are your costs to do that on these sites that we've, we've got. And they took us through that. They were struggling to get cost estimates, so they enlisted Barn Hill to come in and actually go in and give them cost estimates on the steel and the materials and all those sorts of things, to try to get these numbers as accurate as we can get them. Again, I caution you that the numbers we're gonna talk about aren't etched in stone. We don't know the real numbers until we bid them. They're as accurate as the people that are involved in this can make them with today's information, but with the way prices are escalating and changing, you know, I don't know where we're headed.
It's long-term, too. It's only transitory, so we should be getting...
Really?
With, with that said, I'm gonna give you sort of the, the big picture overview, and then Dave will come in and take you through. We had emailed you some of this information before. A couple of things that, when he talks to you, that this doesn't include, we, our station in Nag's Head needs some work. We're working with Nag's Head, but Nag's Head's got some issues, too, with their station, what they wanna do, what they're gonna do in the future with their capital needs, and so we're really not at a point where we know what we're gonna do in Nag's Head, or what they're gonna do, or how much it's gonna cost. And so in these numbers we've put in, we just plugged in a five million dollar placeholder, and that was just a number that Dave and I picked out of the sky based on what it's costing to build a station, where we've built some other stations in these numbers. So that number's in there, and we'll have to see where that goes. There's a number in there for Kill Devil Hills. Again, we've done the preliminary programming with Kill Devil Hills, but we haven't run this by Kill Devil Hills yet. We don't know whether they want to grow their part of the program. We've done it, making some assumptions that may not be true, because Kill Devil Hills may wanna do something different with their part. If they do, some of this may change. From our perspective, it may not change our net number, but in Kill Devil Hills, we're doing the building, so we're gonna borrow all the money, we're gonna borrow the Kill Devil Hills share as well, and then Kill Devil Hills pays us back their share through the rent over the term of the loan. And so our borrowing may change based on whatever happens in Kill Devil Hills and how the project changes, once they have an opportunity to look at, you know, what we've done to this point, and we just haven't done that yet. Similarly, in Rodanthie, we're working with the Rodanthie Fire Department. They own their property as well. Again, we've got a number for us and a number for them. They haven't seen any of this yet either, and so they need to go through and look at it, value engineer it, decide what they can afford, what they want, and those kind of things, and so their side of the equation may change as well as ours should be at or about the same thing. To complicate factor, well, and finally, Southern Shores is another one, and we have met with the town of Southern Shores for their small need in that, but we've also met with the Southern Shores Fire Department for their needs, and we have a plan that we think accommodates those needs. We have not talked to them yet, we have a cost for that, and assuming they're on board, then, then there's no issues. If any of these three entities that we're working with, for whatever reason, choose not to work with us, or the site won't accommodate what we wanna do and what they wanna do, or something leads us to have to go elsewhere, then there is no land cost built in this. So if we had to go acquire land somewhere, these numbers would change as well based on whatever that land cost would be. With all that said, the total cost of our share of this approaches, one last thing, the town of Kitty Hawk is building a station, and we've worked with them to program an EMS station into the Kitty Hawk station. You all were aware of that before, but we have numbers on that, and that's about right at one point seven million dollars would be our share of that. In that situation, that's not in our borrowing or any of our debt. Kitty Hawk will be building that project, and we'll be paying them back that one point seven over time towards their debt service, or however they choose to finance it, but we'll be paying them back over a twenty-year term on that.
What about Mans Harbor?
Mans Harbor, Mans Harbor is in this. Now, the issue with Mans Harbor is what's not in this is, it's not in this to do anything with the fire station. However, the CIP committee instructed us to get with the fire department, figure out what they needed, see what that cost is, and depending on what that is and what that cost is, come back to you all with those numbers to try to accommodate that need as well. So had left them out, it's just not built into this yet. With all that said, the total cost of all this with Kitty Hawk is approaching forty million dollars. That's a huge number, that's, you know, more than what we thought, obviously. It's gone up by a significant amount from two or three years ago when we looked at numbers. The good news in all this, and Dave will tell you in a second, is we've run our financial model for our capital improvement fund multiple times, and we can, we can handle this, we can, we can make this work. We have, we keep coverage ratios, we've talked to you before about coverage ratios, that's the amount of money we set aside to cover debt service. Should we have a bad year or something, then we have a fund for that. And with the funding of these projects, of all of these projects, our, our coverage ratio doesn't go below point six nine, which is more than fifty percent of the, of the debt service. If we do it one way, and if we do it another way, it doesn't go below point eight seven. And so we have sufficient coverage built in to make these plans work, and by rearranging the debt, doing the things that Dave does so well, we're still not compromising any of our other projects that we've done, and the fund is still healthy and solvent doing this. We've used conservative revenue estimates, we're not using revenue estimates based on numbers we're seeing during COVID. We went back to pre-COVID dates to make our revenue estimates, to be sure we weren't overestimating our funds. We're keeping a large fund balance to cover us for any downturn, and so we think we have a good financial plan that will allow us to move forward with these projects. When we complete, when I finish today, we're gonna ask you all to, and the CIP is recommending that we tell the architects to move forward. They're at a place where they need to know whether to sit down and start drawing the real deal, the floor plans and the wiring diagrams, and all the detail that goes into doing these things, or, or not. And, you know, if you all were uncomfortable with these numbers or whatever, then we would have to scale it back and give them different guidance, but we spent, gosh, a whole morning going through all this stuff, and the CIP was comfortable to move forward and recommends that you all do as well. You have that data in the package, and Dave, I'll ask you, I don't know what, if anything, you need to add to that, but...
Just that Bobby was being real nice about what I do, but the reality of it is, is the model's built on pretty much normal revenue, and every month that goes by with the land transfer tax, we're gaining four to five hundred thousand on that number, and that happened again in November. So we're in better shape than what the model had showed. And the other thing, we, it really was a big deal that we got the second double A-plus in January, because what that allows us now to do with our friends in Raleigh on the debt side is we can do what's essentially a construction loan. It's really called a commercial paper, limited obligation bond, private placement, but it's an up to two-year construction loan, and we don't have to take out the bonds until the end of that construction loan, so we're buying time and buying revenue. So really, this is a two thousand twenty-two project, but your bonds will be two thousand twenty-four.
Right.
Gotcha.
So if you, if you choose to go forward this, you'll be doing two things. One, you'll be authorizing the architects to move forward as planned, and two, you'll be authorizing me to go back to the town of Kitty Hawk and let them know that we're in on their project. They're further along in the planning, and they need to know whether we're in or out at that one point, one point six nine three four oh one number that they provided to us. And so those are the two things you would be approving this morning.
All right.
Jim, just as information with regard to the firehouse in Mans Harbor, when we talked about that, we asked them for a, an estimate based on, because they had looked at it previously, and the estimate just for the extension of the bay and potentially a new door, which are, the doors are kind of expensive than new designs and that sort of thing. But they said just a placeholder of two hundred to two hundred fifty thousand dollars would probably cover what needed to be done there, so.
It's important to get it done, because the, the fire trucks literally, the pumper trucks literally are sitting on top of each other. They're ridiculous.
We're with them, we're right there.
And we talked about this, I don't know, a year ago.
This is Larry the Cable Guy.
It's, it's in there, so.
The reason it's not in these numbers, Jim, we had twenty million dollars in the CIP. When this thing got to forty million dollars, we're like, whoa, stop, let's, let's get some guidance from the board now. We're getting in numbers that are, are big, and, and we had to run the models again, so we weren't gonna add other projects to it to, to multiply this number. Now that we're comfortable, we can do it, and it'll work, then adding whatever that takes to lengthen those bays, we don't believe is gonna be significant enough to impact these numbers, and that allows us to move forward. So it's not that we ignored that, it's, I made everybody stop because I was afraid you all were gonna, I wasn't sure how these numbers were gonna work, and I wanted to be sure we weren't getting too deep on the things that we had to have before we started adding other things to it. So that's, that's where we are, and again, the CIP's on board, and we're moving forward with that.
I'm making the motion to move forward and include the Mans Harbor Fire Department numbers into this. I'll make the motion to move forward and include the Mans Harbor Fire Department numbers into this.
I'll second it.
Well, they are. How about let us come back with those numbers?
Come back.
Yeah, when you come back.
Can I just ask a question? Is the Mans Harbor EMS and Fire Department, I know that Fire Department needs are not in the astronomical figure, but are they sharing the same property?
Same property, but not the same building.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
What happens is to get an EMS station on there that's functional, you gotta take down the old EMS station. You're gonna move it around kind of towards the back of the property, which allows you to do whatever you want with the fire station because they're not connected in any way. So whatever we do with the fire station is independent of what we do with the EMS, although they're on the same site.
Right.
That's not true with all of our sites.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner House. I believe, was it you, Commissioner Tobin, to second it? Any further discussion? Hearing none, then those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Just the last thing. In the CIP, we talked about the COA projects almost to the end, I think, February.
February, yeah.
We're finishing up that. Helping Human Services Project is all but complete and we're gonna have a ribbon cutting in the January.
In late January.
In January for that. So those projects are coming to fruition. They're just starting their work on the Parks and Rec refurbishment and so we'll come back to you later with some information similar to this with regard to that, once we have some numbers and some ideas on what needs to be done there. And similarly, they're just starting their work on the Masonic Lodge property. We just closed on that and we'll come back to you with similar numbers and sheets on that once we get to those things. I think that's all the capital projects that we talked about at the CIP meeting, I believe. I think that's all we have. Oh, no, no. The Public Works Facility. We have conceptual site plan drawings for that, but we don't have numbers, Barnhill and them, so we'll come back to you with a similar.
Yeah, that was the last one.
Set of numbers on that as well. We believe, again, all of these projects that we think will fit in the plan because we've got numbers programmed for them, but we'll see as we start getting real numbers.
We have the land.
Those are all, we all have land for all that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add one thing while we're talking about Mans Harbor. If anyone hasn't seen a picture of the Mans Harbor Post Office, you owe it to yourself to ride over there and take a look at it.
Yeah, NASA's been commenting on it from the space.
It is quite something.
Michael does that every year, my neighbor, and there is a donation box. And I'd like to give a shout out to Tideland Electric also. Tideland Electric gives them four hundred dollars a year towards their electric bill, which I think is just pretty awesome. And also they put up a couple temporary power meters. It's a huge project and those young men that live next door, I'm not kidding, they work on that thing for over a month to put all those lights up. And it is fascinating.
It's pretty.
That's a good picture you shot. It was a good perspective.
My driveway goes right through it.
All right, thank you. Public Information Office, Ms. Hester, do you have anything for us?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Sorry about your loss Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought they'd be playing a lot better than that. Wow.
Bobby laughed when I said they'll have another chance.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Careful what you wish for.
All right, Finance Director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. And well, with that being said, once again, I hope everybody has a very Merry Christmas. We need a motion to adjourn until January the third.
I'll make the motion we adjourn this meeting and not meet back again until next year.
All right, thank you, Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Tobin. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.